Folks, let's come to order together this morning here. This is the May 28th version of the Oldham County Planning Commission. I'm Chairman Kevin Jeffries. And before we get started, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. If you would, if you have a cellphone with you, please turn it off or turn it on vibrate so it doesn't interfere with the cameras here in the courtroom. Commissioners, first thing that we need to do is, let me go ahead and get the staff sworn in, if goodness known.
Do you sound misworded, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay. And with that, Commissioners, let's take a look at our minutes, approval of minutes from the April 23rd meeting. And are there, I'd like to get a motion to approve those, and then we'll open it up for additions or corrections. Motion to approve?
I'll move.
Okay, Mr. McWilliams. Mr. Finney, seconds. Now, any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I actually have a couple.
Okay.
On page three of 12, under the presentation by staff, the county engineer Jim Siliman, the third bullet down, they were not actually aerial photos, they were just regular photographs, so strike the aerial. And then on page five of 12, Attorney Baxter questioned Mr. Siliman, who stated, in the first bullet point, it should be site, S-I-G-H-T, distance. And then in the second bullet point, the statement is, Mr. Siliman agreed the speed limit needs to be reduced. What he actually said was that he agrees that the reduced speed limit would improve the site distance issues. So, that'd be just those changes.
All right. Any additional changes? Mr. Finney?
On the May 5th finding decisions made by the Mayor Davis and taken by the Mayor Finney, I did not.
Okay.
And I also don't know that I both know.
Yeah.
Before that, so I would not have.
Right. It was actually elder.
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 Okay. We'll make that correction. Anything else? Any additions or corrections? Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
For the minutes, the motion made by Commissioner, Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Silverman, here.
Oh, okay. Well, it'd been kinda hard for you to do that, wouldn't it?
I would have voted no.
Okay. Do we have any record of who might have done it?
Just, if you don't mind approving it, we'll look at the video and correct whoever made the motion as best we can.
Okay.
It's on the minutes, so it's not hugely critical, but if you don't mind, we'll just do it that way.
Is there any additions, other additions or corrections? Okay, seen none? We'll do a voice vote on the approval of the minutes as corrected for the Tuesday, April 23rd meeting. All those in favor of approving the minutes as corrected signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, minutes have been approved. All right. With that, we will now move into the first public hearing that we have scheduled today, and I'll call on Ms. Nunn for the reading of the docket, please.
Okay, docket PZ-19-010. Application has been filed by Polte Group for the approval of the preliminary subdivision plan for 115 lots on approximately 65.53 acres, to be known as Holly Gibson Road subdivision. The property is located at 8809 Holly Gibson Road, Crestwood. The zoning is R2 Residential District and CO1 Conservation Residential District.
All righty, thank you. And with that, Mr. McIntyre, our new senior planner, will introduce the docket.
Thank you. So, application has been filed by Polte Group for the approval of a preliminary subdivision plan on approximately 65.53 acres for a yet-to-be-named subdivision. The property is located at 8809 Holly Gibson Road in Crestwood. The zoning is R2. Here we have an aerial photo of this subject property. As far as site history is concerned, last year on the September hearing, Oldham County Planning Commission recommended approval of a zoning map amendment of R2 to CO1 and CO1 to R2 on approximately 53.76 acres, on a total tract size of 147 acres, to Oldham County Fiscal Court on a vote of 11 to 0. The Planning Commission also approved a development plan of approximately 147.18 acres, and that was docket 18020. On December 4th of last year, Oldham County Fiscal Court approved the zoning map amendment on a vote of 8 to 0. Here we have the updated zoning map. So today, what we're going to be focusing on is this big tract here. Notes in regards to the subdivision plan, the applicant is proposing 115 lots, 115 single-family lots on 65 acres. The plan includes one detention basin. The homes will be served by sanitary sewers, and the plan outlines 22 and 1/2 acres of open space. Here we have the open space diagram. So with the biggest chunk of open space is down here in section 5, and the four others are scattered within the allowable acreage. Here we have the detention area, so you can see down here. A traffic assessment was completed for the proposal, or for the proposed development, and determined that no potential problems were identified during this assessment. Therefore, no additional analysis is recommended, and no mitigation is necessary to maintain roadway capacity as a result of this development. This picture is a north view of Holly Gibson Road. It was taken at the very south portion, or southern portion of the property, along the road frontage. And as the slides progress, we'll be going further north. Here's another picture, north view, with Holly Gibson on our eastern side. Here's the intersection of Holly Gibson and Francis Avenue, looking west. Here's a view, same intersection, looking east. Here's a view looking north and south. So we progress further north towards the existing entrance to the site, which is up around this area up there. Here we're at the northern portion of the property along the road frontage, looking And to bring it all together, the approved plan, the approval applies only to the plan presented at the May 28th, 2019 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. There should be no subdivision of any lot into a greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. Preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of the approval, and no record plat will be approved until all standards are satisfied. Finally, the cumulative phasing plan shall limit the number of building permits issued to 23 per year, beginning with the first record plat. We more have to take any questions at this time.
Well, we'll open it up for questions here in just a second, but Ms. Siliman, do you want to make your presentation, or, okay?
Sure.
Jim Siliman, Oldham County Engineer, 100 West Jefferson Street. So after a preliminary review of the plans, our opinion is relatively the same as from TRC Technical Review Committee review, which brought up that the applicant's gonna, will have to meet the county ordinance requirements for stormwater. They'll also have to comply with State Division of Water and U.S. Army Corps of Engineer requirements, as well as the county floodplain coordinator approval. On the map that Tom showed, the entrances, there are two entrances located on curves. We did a preliminary review of the intersection and stopping site distance, and within the right-of-way that's shown on the plans, there does appear to be the required site distance for 35 mile-an-hour speed limit, which is the posted speed limit on Holly Gibson Road. So we just ask that when we get to plan approval process with the engineering department, that the consultant and designer show that there is the required ash tow stopping site distance, intersection site distance that we preliminarily saw existed. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams, do you have your report from the school board?
So as you can see, on our form, I have 112, but 115 doesn't matter at this point. It's gonna net us about a half a kid additional. So basically, what you come out with is, this would net us 56 students, based on all the percentages and the factoring that we do, that would put us the final approved capacity, or available capacity, at 110%, which would then net them 23 building permits per year. And it would be at Crestwood, South Middle, and South Oldham High School.
Sir?
Up.
All right, Commissioners, questions for staff? Any questions for staff? Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really care who answers this. What do our regulations, policies, procedures, et cetera, et cetera, say relative to the size of detention basins? What determines that?
The size of it's based on the current discharge from the site, and basically, they've got a size of the detention basin, so the runoff from the site doesn't exceed the current runoff.
And who measures the current runoff?
It's calculated based on the existing topography and rainfall. The consultant will provide calculations, and the engineering department checks those.
Okay, so the, someone from the applicant's team
That's correct.
determines the runoff. You guys say, yep, we agree with it, or we don't.
That's correct.
And then that determines the size of the detention basin.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions? Mr. Douglas?
Jimmy Mez will stay up there for me.
He's either just stays.
I know we went through this when they came in for a zoning change, but the Blue Line Stream runs through there.
Correct.
And I'm sure the engineer and the developer is aware of that.
That's correct.
So I noticed that detention basin, and they're calling it a compensation-type basin, is right near that Blue Line Stream. What factors that into the developer and the engineer to ensure no additional settlement, no pollution? What needs to be done for that basin, because you haven't seen there?
Right. Well, as mentioned, and this was brought up in a pre-application meeting, and also at TRC, and the Blue Line Stream will require the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer review and approval. They've advised, there was a similar project done recently that had a similar situation that was approved, so we'll just have to make sure the Army Corps of Engineer approves it, State Division of Water approves it, and then we'll make our final calculations also.
Okay. And based on the preliminary plans you've seen, is that one detention basin sufficient enough?
I haven't made those calculations, and those haven't been provided to be checked at this point.
Okay.
That'll come later.
That's usually in construction plans.
Correct. And I'm just wondering, because we've already seen the preliminary stages of where the lots are, will they have to be reconfigured or redone if there needs to be a change in?
Yes.
And does that come back to the Planning Commission?
Well, if there are minor changes, it's usually on a staff level. If they reduce the number of lots, that's on a staff level. If they can't put more lots, because we usually have a binding element, so typically in the construction plans, it's dealt with on a staff level.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. Any additional questions for staff? Let me get Ms. Smith, and then I'll get you, Mr. Williams. Ms. Smith?
In the neighborhood meeting, they said they were gonna have detention basins. Was that with all the acreage?
That would probably be a question for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Williams?
I think my question's gonna be answered later. I'll just pass it for now.
All right. Any additional questions for staff? All right. Seen none? We'll now move into the presentation of the applicant, and representatives and others in support of the application. And you have 50 minutes. So, Mr. Talbot, I would assume that would be you. If you want to get your folks sworn in, we could do that all at once.
Yeah, that'd be a great idea.
Okay. Ms. Nunn?
Dan and Curtis will probably be the ones to testify.
Okay.
David, you want to get sworn in as well?
Do you sound misworded, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, John Talbot, Bardot Warper Talbot Roberts. My address is 1,000 North Hurstborn Parkway, Louisville, Kentucky, 40223. Good morning, everybody. Thank you all for your all's time today. I hope everybody had a great holiday weekend. I had a, came back from a 400-mile trip. It took me about 13 hours to bake with three kids yesterday, so I'm still a little bit tired from that. But we are here. I think this plan is pretty straightforward, and so I don't want to belabor any of the points. Mr. McIntyre did a good job explaining it. It's 115 lots. We're on 65.53 gross acres, and the land that all of the lots are on is all on R2, and so we're not asking for any waivers or variances on any of that. There is some CO1 that's all been protected. It's a part of the site as well. And I'll roughly show you where that is. I think Mr. McIntyre's display showed those pretty well, but if you've got any more detailed questions, we have the engineers who can testify about that. Oh, and we did have our neighborhood meeting that someone brought up. You know, you mentioned on the basins. I don't recall that. If that was, if that was, I'm not here to debate it, but if somebody, perhaps that was a typographical error on my part, or just misstated, but we did show them the plan, and I've got in the slide presentation the original plan, so it always just showed one basin, so I don't think there would have been any confusion about that. So, a very sharp, keen eye, if you caught that, by the way. This shows the original plan. This is the area zoning map. This is not really very detailed, and I think this is the old one, before it had been updated. But generally, you get the idea, it has some R2 and some CO1 in the midst of it. This is the detail that's current, in the dark green, you can see the CO1 on the full site, and the R2 is on the white areas. Again, the area we're here for today is not as good as drawing this as Mr. McIntyre was. Basically, it's this area is the area that we're looking at for this plan that we're here for today. This shows the aerial, and as we zoom in, you can see it a little bit better. Again, to the left, where you see the lots, that's generally where the subdivision is. The land onto the right side of the screen is the part that's not part of our plan, and that is just remaining as it is currently. We do have one stubbed-out street that potentially could go to that area if it's developed later. At the neighborhood meeting, there were some concern, questions really, about whether we would connect to the neighborhood and the homes above it. We have no plans for that. We're at 115 lots, which is well under the 200-lot limit to have two entrances, and even with the 115 lots, we still have two entrances. So we're more than covered. We don't need access to those lots currently, and even if it was developed some years down the road, probably don't even need it then. But regardless, that's not a question that really needs to be taken up today. If that area's ever developed in the future, it would all have to be questioned then and decided at that point. But again, even if they did, I think the two entrances that are on the plan would probably be more than sufficient for it. This shows the original plan that we had, and as you can see, this shows just, it has one detention basin on it, down at the bottom, the little stem at the bottom. And you'll see, as we go to the updated plan, that detention basin changed in size. Basically, the changes that we made, we had two versions that's changed, we're actually in our third version, so two amended versions. Most of them were pretty technical in nature. I don't think in a, from a substantive standpoint, anything really changed dramatically. But if you've got questions about some of those details, we can bring Mr. Mucci up here to answer those detailed questions. But by and large, it stayed roughly the same. To give you an example, some of the changes, Mr. McIntyre pointed out that, I think we did our math wrong. We had 114 lots being showed, it was really 115. There were some other things in terms of identifying the open space lots. Apparently, we all liked those in the thousands, so we renumbered those. But again, nothing substantive really changed in that regard. This shows the first updated preliminary subdivision plan, and as you go to the current, if I flip back and forth, you really can't see a whole lot of discernible differences if I flip back and forth. And again, if you wanted to ask the detailed questions of what those changes were, if you're curious, we can bring Mr. Mucci up to answer them. This kind of gives some detail on the specifics of it. Under the R2 that's permitted, that's in the column on the left, we can have density up to 3.63. I'm gonna jump all the way to the right-hand side, because that shows what our plan is currently. Instead of 3.63, we're well underneath that from a gross density, we're at 1.75, so it would be probably a little bit under half what we're permitted. And under the net density, we're just slightly over two dwellings per acre. The lot count under R2 with the land we have, you could potentially go up to 195. We're well under that at 115. And our square foot or our lots go from the minimum of 12,000 feet, there's some on cul-de-sacs and so forth, that gets quite a bit larger, around 27,000 square feet. Terms of open space in R2, we don't have to provide any, although this is not an open space subdivision, it does share some of the benefits of that type of subdivision. We have a little over 22 acres that'll be preserved as open space, and that's roughly a third of the property that we have. The gross land area, I thought Mr. McIntyre got this point pretty, hit this pretty hard, but strongly. 65.53 in the gross, and the net is 56.72. And then the house design standards, there's none that are required, but we'll show you some of the elevations as we go through them. Before I go into those elevations, I wanted to comment on the traffic assessment. You all may recall, actually, you probably don't, from TRC, if you all watched that. We were not required to do a traffic study on this, because we were underneath the threshold on the regulations for it. Holly Gibson, if you extrapolate the numbers out as much as you could, you end up with 1,900, which is below the 2,000 average daily traffic threshold for Holly Gibson, so we did not have to do a traffic study. We do have Diane Gibson here, she did get sworn in. There was one error in her report, and it was really not much so, she never probably just wasn't correctly described, but she has the lanes, I think she put them as a minimum of nine feet. All those, both lanes on Holly Gibson are a minimum of 10 feet, and we did actually go back and measure them. Ms. Zimmerman measured them. We can bring her up, and, actually, I would like to bring her up to testify on that, to correct her report, but it's at a minimum of 20 feet. I think it really is roughly 20 to 21 feet, by and large, on the paved surface. When you get the curves and gutter on the side, it's really actually probably over 23 feet. So this road is in good shape, and I did say at the neighborhood meeting, this was a really good road, and some of the people laughed when I said that, but in the roads I've seen Oldham County from doing subdivisions, this is actually one of the wider ones, so I was pleased to see that. And this shows some of the pictures. I thought Mr. McIntyre's report did a pretty good job of showing you the approach shots, so I'll go through these relatively quickly. But here are the home designs, the type of neighborhood, there will not be any age discrimination on these types of lots, but the market they're trying to look at. There usually will not be basements unless somebody wants to pay extra for that, and so the market they're expecting is probably gonna be empty nesters, by and large, and younger people to move in. It's really not the best neighborhood for a family-type development, although I'm sure you'll get some, but that's not gonna be probably the main market that this neighborhood goes after. And I'll just flip through some of these homes relatively quickly. And that's the end of the slide presentation. Again, I would like to bring Mrs. Zimmerman up to comment on her traffic study report.
Good morning, Diane Zimmerman. 12-803 High Meadows Pike Prospect, Kentucky 40059. As John mentioned, I'm not exactly sure at this point where 18 feet came from, whether I measured that from the aerial photograph, or took it from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet's database, but I did go yesterday and measured at 9,100 Holly Gibson, and it measured 20 feet 2 inches at that location, and as I drove it, I felt like that width was consistent. And to kind of, just for, into the record, 115 lots would generate 86 a.m. peak hour trips and 116 p.m. peak hour trips. And there are, as Tom quoted, there are no deficiencies that were identified during the assessment, and no capacity improvements are needed.
The only question Diane and I have is on the level of service, were you at C or better, is that correct?
We did not do a level service analysis.
Oh, you did not? Okay, very good. Thank you. Dan, can you come up here and testify? I know you did some measurements on the road as well, on a few more spots than that.
Yes, I measured the
Dan, we need your name and address for the record, please.
Dan Hempel, 10350 Olmwood Park Place, Suite 103, Louisville, Kentucky.
And if you can just make sure and speak up, because the air conditioning system makes it hard for people here.
40223. So I did go out there over the weekend and remeasured the pavement. I took about four measurements, the first one being at the south corner of our property.
Could you point that out on the, on your map there on the screen?
The first measurement, I was right here, and it was, like Diane said, at 20, 20.1, 20 to 20.3 feet pavement. From back to curb, it was 23, 23 feet plus or minus. The second measurement I took was, I'm trying to think where, the entrance, the existing entrance to the subdivision, or to the site, which is about, like, right in here. And it's the same thing, a minimum of 20, 20 feet, 23 feet back to curb. And I also took another measurement at the corner right up here, and same thing, it was 20.1 to 20.3. Then I also went further on down the road in Holly Gibson, and took another, took some more measurements as well, and it's the same thing. So it's fairly consistent all the way through there.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
And I'm just about to wrap it up. I don't mean to spend too much time on that road width, and to tell you the truth, I probably wouldn't have mentioned it at all, because this has not come up in our pre-app studies, not come up in TRC at all. And the only reason I mention is just to correct the record, since we had it mistaking in the traffic assessment that we provided, to make sure the record is correct. But I believe we're in compliance with all the rules and regulations for the major subdivision plans of Oldham County. I think this plan protects and provides for the public health, safety, and welfare of your all's county, and it also protects the character and the social and economic stability of Oldham County. I thank you all very much. If you have any more detailed questions, again, we are here and available to answer any questions you all may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll now move into testimony and questionings by those opposing the application.
Anybody else in favor?
Oh, yes, true. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak in favor or support of this application? Anyone else to speak in favor or support? Okay, seen none. We'll now move into testimony and questions by those opposing the application. Is there anyone here that would like to speak or have questions in opposition to the application? Seen none. We'll now move into the questioning of the applicant by the commission. Commissioners, do you have questions for the applicant today? Mr. Douglas? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Smith, I didn't see your hand.
If I understood you correctly, you only measured in one
If I understood you correctly, you only measured in one spot yesterday?
Yep, that is correct.
And that's the basis of this report that we received this morning?
No, sir. No, ma'am. I mean, the report lists 18 feet, and at this point, I no longer recall where I got 18 feet, but I went out yesterday and measured and confirmed 20 feet is the actual width.
But we had a revised report this morning?
I did not submit a revised report.
Okay, thank you.
I did. You didn't submit a revised report today. It's dated on there. What's the date of the revision?
Revised, May 21, 19.
The one that had the corrected numbers, based off of Neil Schaefer's review of your original report, you submitted a revised report.
I think I added one paragraph on page five or something to that.
But it's difficult to compare when we don't receive it until the day of.
Yes. I did not get the comments in time.
And I didn't know whether you conversed with Mr. Hempel yesterday.
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. McWilliams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Tabit, you can probably do this, and if you can't, you can hand it off to somebody. A question about the adjoining property, I guess it would be south, the red pen property? Does that adjoin this property anywhere?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the question about accessing the roads?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question.
The red pen property that...
The old landfill.
Say again?
It does not adjoin this property.
It does not adjoin. Any, so there's no concerns or anything about...
No, there's a piece of property.
Diane, let me get you up to the mic, please.
There is a piece of property that separates our property and the red pen site.
From red pen. Okay. I think all that's been squared away, but thou shalt not assume. Okay, that's that question. Next one has to do with open space. When you're developing a property and you provide open space, what's your purpose for that?
Well, the, Mr. Hempel could probably give a more detailed explanation on that. It's my understanding as a lawyer that usually that's done for marketing standpoint. I mean, a lot of people nowadays prefer the smaller lots, they don't want to have as much open space that is their obligation to have to take care of. And also having the amenities of having open space around you, you've got areas that people can, it's a common area, it can be used for all sorts of things, for walking around, just visually, it's more attractive. There's lots of reasons for that. Sometimes it's just land that's not, not developable is used for open space as well. But even when it's not developable, as you know, you can make lots much larger, you could have larger lots on that land and just have the actual improvements on the part that is developable, but sometimes you might have a fall-away lot or something like this. But we're seeing this really truly common in almost all subdivisions nowadays. People used to, probably 30, 40 years ago, where you would have lots covering all of the ground. Now, it's very common to have some open space put in, and I think primarily it's from a marketing standpoint.
Topography of the open space on this particular development, would you say it's suitable for what?
I haven't really evaluated it, since we're not developing it, I didn't really analyze that. Mr. Mucci, you might come up and get some comments on that?
Now, I don't know much about these maps, but I believe from training I had before most of you were born, the closer they are, the steeper the lines. Is that right?
That's correct. My name is Curtis Mucy with Mendel Scott, 5151 Jefferson Boulevard, Louisville, Kentucky.
Would you spell your last name and place for the record?
M-U-C-C-I.
All right.
Going back to your comment, the closer that the contour lines are, the more steep the property is. Going to your original question, the open space lot in the middle, we'll call it there, that's actually a gas easement, so in all practical purposes, nothing will go there because it's a gas easement. To the south, there are some steep slopes in that, so probably once again, it, nothing will go there. It will be wooded for its remainder. And then there's a detention basin there as well. So, really, just general open space, not used, and detention base. People can walk there, but no development will happen within that area.
And any potential recreational use by the residents in that open space?
It's possible, that would be a question.
Is it probable?
Dan, do you think that any recreational uses would be provided within these open spaces?
As far as, are you wanting to put like playground equipment or something like that, or just people can go back there and use it? I mean, typically...
Do people walk around back there? Is there potential to put picnic tables or swings?
I mean, we have no intention of developing that property if, you know, after we turn over the homeowners association, if they, if they want to do that, we'll typically maintain it, mow it, you know, once a month, twice, you know, every other week or something like that, depending on how it grows. But like Curtis said, there isn't a gas easement that we're working around, but even outside of that gas easement, there's open space that we, that could have been developed, but the typical consumers want smaller lots now. They don't want to maintain a larger lot, and that's why we get the lot the size that we, correct that we need, and then give everything else to open space.
Thank you, gentlemen, for educating me.
Ms. Smith?
The way I understand, there will be, there's no road frontage on the back part of the parcel of the property.
Hey, road frontage on the back by the stream you're talking about, back along this area?
When, when, all the road frontage is on the front parcel that's going to be developed.
That's correct. Holly Gibson is all...
That's the reason for the stub road.
Well, the stub road is to give potential access to the area that is not being developed at this point. And, you know, commonly, the governments want us to give access to these types of areas, so they ask us to get stubs. And it does leave the open, the possibility that would be developed in the future.
Can you speak up?
Yes. It's rare that I don't speak loud enough. Did anyone have any trouble hearing me?
That's good.
No.
I hopefully answered your question. We've got it stubbed in case it ever gets developed in the future to give access to that area. Usually, nobody wants us to have any land that's, that's cut off from anything, and so we're providing that stub, we're providing that stub so it's there to develop in the future potentially.
And the maintaining of the detention basin, that'll be Polte's responsibility until it goes to the homeowners association? Is that the way it is?
Yes, that's right.
And about how long typically does it take before it's turned over to the homeowners association?
That's a good question. Ms. Hempel, you got comments on that?
Typically, since we are restricted to 23 building permits, so you're probably looking about four to five years from the time we start our first house till we turn it over. We don't typically turn over the homeowners association until we sell the last lot.
Lot, last lot.
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Douglas?
I guess this could be for one of your engineers' questions, or whoever. I understand there are several lots that encroach the several intermedial, intermediate streams in the area that feed into the blue line streams. What do you intend to mitigate those properties of those particular lots being developed in those stream areas?
Curtis, you want to come answer that?
We have two intermittent streams on site. We are not encroaching into any of those with residential lots.
Lot 40, lot 41, lot 31. You want me to keep naming them?
Our lot 40 shows that stream starting right at the rear of that property line.
Have you assessed to see what, because we, you know, I'm going on history from other subdivisions, and we've had issues where in the past, a development comes in, there'll be intermediate streams. But anyway, what I'm getting at is what, are you going to use them as natural streams? Are you going to fill them in? What are you going to do with them on those...
These will be preserved. They're in a 25-foot buffer, so we will have a buffer associated with those streams. And that's also why we revised the detention basin, was to protect the streams running along the west and east side of that. So, we've done our part to reduce mitigation for those.
Do you anticipate any flooding in those lots? Any stormwater runoff on those lots?
I do not.
You do not?
Do not.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Davis?
If your mic on... Do I understand there was no traffic study, no real traffic study on Holly Gibson Road? And why was there not a traffic study?
The traffic study is not required under Yorales regulations. We were under, to have a traffic study, you've got to have over 2,000 average daily trips on the road. And even if you extrapolated the future traffic as much as you could, you still only reached 1,900. So, we were underneath that threshold, even assuming everything to be the worst on this, on this neighborhood. So, that's why we did not.
I live on Holly Gibson Road, and I see the traffic, and it's increased dramatically over the last few years.
Ms. Davis, just make sure you're not testifying.
Pardon me?
Just make sure you don't testify.
Oh, I'm not.
Okay.
And I was wondering, I'm sure this is for the county's benefit, but if there should not be lines on that road, people do not know that they're supposed to stay on their side of the road. So, that would be something when the new people come in, that we're going to increase that traffic, and we need to do something that makes the road safer.
Well, a couple of things I'll point out. Your observation about traffic increasing, I think that's reflected in Ms. Zimmerman's report. There's no question it has increased, but still, when you extrapolate it out in the future, we're still underneath that threshold. In terms of putting lines on the road, I have seen you all do that and require that on some subdivisions, but that was when you, that was a mitigation, when you had a road that did not meet the county's standards, and this road actually exceeds the county's standards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Finney?
Yes, I have a question concerning the stub road, and it looks that it allows into one section of that property. We have another undeveloped piece in the lower right-hand corner of that slide. What would be the access to that property upon development?
You're talking about the part down here?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that one stub would be the stub that would be access to that whole area if it ever got developed in the future.
Okay. From the top portion that is, appears to be open ground, you're going to cross through a section of woods, I'll call it. Is that topographically accessible that way?
I think it is, but since we're not developing that, and we don't have a plan in front of you all for this commission to even discuss developing that, we've not really considered it and looked into it. We've got the stub there, so access is available if it ever is necessary in the future. And if some new plan, if it's going to be developed in the future, a new plan would come forward and have to address all of those issues. But I don't think we've really fully examined all of those things in terms of building that land out or anything, because that's not part of our intention today.
I understand it's not part of your intentions. My question is, is that if you can't get from the top parcel to the bottom parcel, where would be your stub road down here to get to the bottom parcel?
Yeah, very good question. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that full. Do you guys know the top topography of the land to answer that?
Yes, I have walked that site. So, there is an existing gravel drive that basically runs, I'm trying to think, how do I do this? About right through here, that comes back into their, into the woods. So, and it does go all the way back, the property's fenced and gated, and there are old farm, farm roads that go back through the, through the property that you can get through.
So, there are existing roads from the top parcel to the bottom parcel?
They, in the past, they have grown crops on that back open space, so there are roads to get back through there.
I understand. It looks like they've grown crops on this lower right-hand open space also. My, my question is, was access to that through what is now the detention basin, or will be the detention basin, and if it is, you will not be able to build a road there in the future?
No, you cannot get from the end of that cul-de-sac where our detention basin is over to the residual tract, which we're calling residual tract one. So, your access is at the top, but you can drive all the way down through there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bonnet?
This kind of follows along the same lines, and I apologize if it's been addressed at some point, but on residual tract one, you have the existing house to remain and the outbuildings and barns to remain, but the driveway is listed to be removed, and there's actually a lot on top of it. So, how do you access the house that's remaining?
Good question. Curtis, can you, Dan, can you answer that too?
The house that is there is dilapidated, so there's nobody living there. So, it's, it's, it's about ready to fall down.
It's remaining, just you're waiting for it to kind of...
But we're not, we're not taking it down. We're not tearing it down, not what the owner of the property does with it, but it's, it's uninhabitable.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any additional questions? Any additional questions? All right, seeing none, Mr. Tabit, we're down to final statement.
I don't think I have any final statement. I think we said everything we want to say, and thank you all very much.
So, your application is completed?
Yes.
Okay. All right, docket PZ 19010 is complete. And with that, as always, I will call on Mr. Urban and our attorney, Mr. Carter, to outline what's being requested at this point.
Well, essentially, in front of you today is a question of a preliminary subdivision plan. On page three in your staff report, you have sample motions either for approval or denial. There are no waivers or variances requested with this, so it's a, again, a standard subdivision that meets the requirements of our regulations. There are four proposed binding elements. Those are also on page three in your staff report. The first is the approval applies only to the plan presented at the May 28, 2019 Oldham County Planning Commission public hearing. The second is there shall be no subdivision of any lot into greater number of lots without review by the Oldham County Planning Commission. Third is the preliminary plan must comply with all established federal, state, and county ordinances and requirements at the time of the approval, and no record plat will be approved until all standards are satisfied. And then number four is the cumulative phasing plan shall limit the number of building permits issued to 23 per year, beginning with the first record plat. I heard no other potential binding elements during any testimony, and I think that the applicants agree to those four binding elements. They haven't stated that they object to them.
Okay. Mr. Carter, anything else that you need to add?
No.
Okay. All right, at this point, the chair would entertain a motion now on docket PZ 19010, which is an application from the Polte group for a preliminary subdivision plan approval. Mr. McWilliams? Did I see your hand?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the preliminary subdivision, subdivision plan because based on the material presented to us in our staff report, it complies with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinances and subdivision regulations. Additionally, I think this development is consistent with other areas along Holly Gibson Road and surrounding Holly Gibson Road as far as the type of development that it is. And I would also, as part of my motion, include the four binding elements that were presented to us.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
Yes, I agree.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mr. Hafling? I think I saw your hand first. Seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan on docket PZ 19010? Any discussion? All right, seeing no hands go up, we'll now proceed to vote on the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan. I'll call on Ms. None for account, or for a vote.
Okay, Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Bonnet?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Nasser?
Yes.
Mr. McWilliams?
Yes.
Mr. Klingepeus?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mr. Hafling?
Yes.
Mr. Finney?
Yes.
Valby?
Yes.
All right, the motion to approve the preliminary subdivision plan on the Polte group on Holly Gibson Road on docket PZ 19010 has been approved on a vote of 13 to 0. And with that, we'll take a ten-minute recess to reset for our discussion of our Oldham County Conferency Plan zoning ordinance updates.
Yeah, because I went back from the last one.
Yeah, right. Yeah, because that's normally...